Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels.
Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel.
If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates.
A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings.
You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well. and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16. And can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report. With recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
The Board, for the last hour, was in non-public session for approximately 40 minutes. And then, for the last 20 minutes or so, we've been in the Wheelwright Room conducting two interviews for the Tax Exemption and Credit Advisory Committee meeting. So with that, it's time for our regular business meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the Board. To my right, Selectwoman Dan Chartren, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left, our Clerk Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
Offline, we have our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy and our Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel, good evening. My name is Nico Papakosandis, and we welcome respective town staff and everybody else in the room, and certainly those watching from home. Before we jump into public comment, I'd like to take just a minute to express some sadness. Late last week, the Town of Exeter lost a lifelong resident, Joseph Bellageron, who, again, was not only a long lifetime resident of the Town of Exeter, but was also a longtime employee with the Town of Exeter. So I wanted to acknowledge him. I wanted to send out our thoughts and prayers to the Bellageron family. And I'd like to offer and honor Mr. Bellageron with a moment of silence, if we would. Thank you. May his memory be eternal.
If I could say a few words.
Please, if you would, Selectwoman Gilman.
I grew up as a neighbor of Joe's. And all of his kids and my siblings and Nancy's in-laws were all neighbors together. And between us, we had, I think, 17 children in three houses within a quarter mile. And Joe has always had a ready laugh. When I grew up and became a selectwoman, he had a thing or two to say to me. Not afraid to say it.
With the finger, too.
With the finger. But he was a lot of fun. But he was a lot of fun, and he has some great kids that we enjoyed being neighbors with. And his brother Art, who has been our mayor for many, many years, is going to miss him, I'm sure. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who has worked with him and been part of his life.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We'll jump into public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to comment. We don't really don't have any public here this evening and no one online. So we will jump right to the approval of minutes for our last meeting of August 19, 2024. I'd first ask if there are any amendments or revisions to the meeting minutes?
I do. I'm sorry, I'm not there yet.
That's all right. Take your time, please.
There we go. There were... So just on page 1, number 2, Board Interviews, just number B has Mark Furlong's name that needs to be redacted because he's in A. See what I mean? So Mark Furlong was... And then Jerry Hamill. So just the 4, Mark Furlong, would be taken out. And then I had a question. On page 2, and I apologize, I did not go back to look at the meeting, but I thought of it when I came in tonight. On page 2, the motion was to authorize... I made the motion to authorize Eagle Scout Troop 323 to... But they were supposed to come back with a design on the box. But what it doesn't say is if we're supposed to approve it. And I thought it was to approve the final design on the five box.
Yeah, we didn't really...
I don't think we formally said we needed to formally approve it, but we asked that they bring it down.
I know, we talked about it, and that's where I stopped.
Yeah, I don't think we formally requested that.
And again, my apologies, I could have...
Well, the motion has them coming back to the Board with the final design and...
Right. I just didn't know if the 4 approval was important or not, but that's fine. So I am done.
So Joanna, so I'm clear. I think we're striking 2A. And then with 2B becoming 2A, presumably it would be Jerry Hamill and Mark Furlong?
Oh, that's... Well, we can do either way.
It doesn't matter. I just tried to follow along. Okay.
So what do you want to do? Strike A and turn B into A and change 4 to and?
So Jerry Hamill and Mark Furlong were interviewed for the Tax Exemption and Credit Advisory Committee. That make sense? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Great. Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger. Are there any other amendments or revisions to the...
I was not present, so I will not be voting.
Okay, thank you, Selectman Chartren.
Mr. Chair, I would... I'll move to approve the minutes of agreement.
August.
August 19.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Sorry, I just scrolled back up to the top to see the date.
So the motion on the table is to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of August 19, 2024, as amended. There's a second by Selectwoman Belanger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Passes 4, 0 with 1 abstention. We have one resignation to consider this evening. That is from Marissa Vitolo, who's currently or was the Chair of the Exeter Arts and Culture Committee. Marissa was one of the original folks who volunteered back in 2021 and was appointed and did a lot of great work on the committee, actually, but has some other work obligations and time obligations. So unfortunately, we need to consider her resignation, so...
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion with my thanks to Marissa to accept her resignation. She did a great job while she was Chair.
And I will second that, and I was sad that I didn't get a chance to work with her. That was going to be my first meeting, so... But thank you for her service.
So a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And again, thank you, Marissa, for your work. Jumping into our discussion items, the first item this evening is our Waste Zero Trash Metering Supplies and Services Agreement. We have our Public Works Director, Mr. Steve Cronin. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. With me tonight is Taylor Millsport from Waste Zero. We asked her to come tonight so you could ask any questions regarding the Pay as You Throw program or the trash metering market as a whole.
Welcome.
Before you is a proposed agreement with Waste Zero to extend our current contract for three years for our Pay as You Throw program. We first started with Waste Zero several years ago, but since 2010, we converted to a strictly retail store distribution model with blue bags. So what we're looking to do is enter into a contract that would give us some price certainty over the next three years to protect both the town and Waste Zero from some market fluctuations that we've seen in recent years, so... Want to open it up to any questions you may have about the program? Otherwise, I can hand it over to Taylor, and she can kind of give a bit of a refresher on how it works.
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. So Waste Zero works with over 500 municipalities across the United States with their Pay as You Throw program. And as you guys know, Pay as You Throw is just that. You're paying for what you generate. On average, municipalities that have Pay as You Throw see a reduction of over 40% of their trash, all because of that special blue bag that people have. And our partnership with Exeter, what we really do is we make it easy. That means our team, we manufacture all of our bags right here in the United States. We take care of the invoicing, the shipping, the manufacturing, the warehousing, the orders from the stores, really so that there's no extra burden on your staff. Instead, we're taking that on. We also have a customer service portion that makes it easy. And really, with the goal of reducing trash, making sure that you're extending the life of the landfills, making sure that people are taking accountability and making their trash the most fair and equitable way to deal with their trash.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I do. So your customer service part, what does that encompass? Just so if I have a problem with the blue bags, my understanding is that I could bring them back to wherever I purchased them, but the return process is actually through your company, correct?
Yep.
Could you just explain that a little bit? Because I do see some social media posts with people that aren't really clear of the process.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a dedicated team of customer service that are located right here in the United States, and your residents can give us a call. Our team will ask them some questions to see what the problem is that they might be experiencing with their bags. And then we're actually able to ship them bags right to their house as replacements.
So can I just follow up, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
So how do they know to find the phone number, I guess? Do we have that on our website?
I believe we do, but if it's not readily available...
Can we check on that just to be on the safe side? Because I think most people were thinking that they could bring it back to the store at a market basket or RJ's, and, you know, they need some understanding of how they can get replacement bags.
Absolutely, and we can look. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but if we don't have our number on the bag, we can easily add that as well.
I love it.
There you go.
It's not on?
No. So what I was going to suggest, if possible, you put a filler, a page in there so that people know the size of the bag, maybe having the phone number on that.
Yeah, we absolutely can add that number.
Instead of stamping it on the bag, it might be less expensive to put it on your filler?
So on the...
I don't know. I'm throwing a thought.
Yeah, we can put them on both.
Yes.
Of course. Now, when I open my bag of bags, the first thing I throw out is the insert. That's the first thing that goes in a blue bag.
I don't. This is my recycle bin.
So we can do it on both and get...
Yeah, so there you go. I was just throwing out some thoughts.
But I think if it's not on the website, I think that would be the first place I'd go.
Yeah, thank you.
So... Mr. Cronin, maybe this message, this question is for you. Do you anticipate the cost of the bags for customers increasing at all?
That's something that we're still working on right now.
Okay.
You know, we are in the middle of budget season. You know, we have seen an increase in the cost of production, but it has been fairly consistent year to year. So we are going to be looking at revenue as part of our budget projection this year.
So it's a separate issue for...
Yeah, that's not...
And the current cost is $2.50 a bag?
Yes, for large bags, and I believe it's...
$1.75.
It's $1.75 for small bags.
So we've begun to do some research on that, and you can expect to hear from us, I think, on that.
The last time I think we saw a bag increase was in 2018, if I remember correctly.
Actually, I want to say it was... I actually remember when it was. It was right before COVID. It was 2020. Because there was a very spirited budget meeting in January. That's what I remember.
Right, because the idea is not really for revenue, right? It was really just to make sure that it's breaking even.
It's not a moneymaker for the town, it's right.
Right.
It's to cover the solid waste disposal costs and collection.
Yeah.
Okay. So, please.
If you're finished, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if we had any further questions from Mr. Cronin or Taylor?
Yeah, I'd like to tag on to the Chair's question. We've been pretty aggressive about our sustainability and having the Mr. Fox Service for composting at the transfer station and help see for taking textiles out of the trash stream. Is that going to affect the cost here? Because in theory, we should be using less blue bags.
You know, the tonnage that we're seeing from compost and textile, it has increased, but it really isn't enough to offset the amount of bags needed in a significant way that would drive costs down at this point. So, you know, it is something we're going to continue to keep an eye on. This contract, if it is approved, is going to align with our waste management contracts. So we're going to be looking at all those things when we consider going back out to bid in 2026 for the next contract. There are things that are happening as far as curbside compost that are, you know, being rolled out right now in other communities, so we're keeping an eye on that. But yeah, anything we can do to try to divert from the waste stream is going to help bring our tonnage down. You know, the recycling market still hasn't really quite rebounded yet at this point. So, you know, we saw our tipping fees kind of max out at the end of last year. They have started to trickle down a little bit, which is good, but, you know, that's really a big driver of our costs right now.
Yeah, that's actually where my question goes, is more towards the tipping fees rather than the blue bag.
Yeah. Yeah, it's dropped quite a bit since the end of last year. I mean, we're seeing it down about, you know, $3,000 to $4,000 a month less than what we were paying at the end of the year, which is good. But again, on any given day, those can jump back up on us.
And we do have population increases, so...
Yes. But the blue bag program is working. You know, our tonnage is fairly stable year to year, which is good. We did see a little bit of a dip in our recycling tonnage this year, so we're keeping an eye on that. It could be, you know, time for a little bit more public education or just, you know, careful reminder to folks.
You know, I'd like that. It's been several years since the former Public Works Director, I think she came out in '21 or '22 and did a really nice presentation for the Select Board and also for the Sustainability Committee. So maybe in the next couple of months, when your time allows, realizing you're busy.
Yeah, we've gathered some statistics lately. We'll pass those along to Sustainability so that they can start to look at those and brainstorm some ideas.
All right, thanks. Then if there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve a three-year Supplies and Services Agreement with Waste Zero for Trash Metering and to further authorize the Town Manager or their designated to execute the associated agreement documents.
So moved.
Okay.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to talk to us. Of course.
Okay, Mr. Cronin?
Next up tonight, we have a bid award recommendation for septic receiving equipment installation. As you know, you awarded a contract over the winter for the equipment. We recently bid out the installation portion of the project. We received three bids. Those were reviewed by our consultant, Wright Pierce, and then sent along to New Hampshire DES for their review. We heard back from DES a few weeks ago, giving us the go-ahead to award this contract and proceed with the project. So we're recommending that you award the bid to PRB Construction of Guilford, New Hampshire at a price of $165,000.
And I'd like to note, point in your memo, that the authorization allows the project to remain eligible for some state aid grant money?
Correct, yes. That'd be a reimbursable grant if we were to get it.
Great. Are there any questions, Mr. Cronin?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to award the bid for the septic receiving equipment installation to PRB Construction of Guilford, New Hampshire in the amount of $165,000 to further authorize the Town Manager or their designated to execute all corresponding documents.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming today, too.
Have a good night. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dean, you've got the deed waivers up next, please.
Yes, this is something the Tax Collector brings to the Select Board annually, and it is for properties that are due to be deeded to the town for non-payment of, in this case, the 2021 tax lien. We have a series of properties here that we're recommending that a deed waiver be approved. Those properties are in Section 2, and the rationale for recommending the deed waiver is the properties listed in that Section 2 are subjecting the town to liabilities under RSA 80:762A. So the recommendation is to have those properties be granted deed waivers, and then we plan on working with the single-family homeowners that are listed in Section 1 on perhaps a payment plan or some other recourse to have them avoid a tax deed.
Are there any questions, Mr. Dean? And I believe that I need to read each individual parcel in individual motion.
Unfortunately, yes.
For each, okay.
Shall I?
It's up to you. But if you do, the language would be you're moving to grant a deed waiver to the parcel number under that RSA.
Okay, let's see.
If you can read my writing.
Better than mine. Mr. Chair, I move to grant a deed waiver to parcel number MAP 103, Lot 13, Unit 41, under RSA 80:26...
Second.
262-8.
8076.
80762A.
Not bad that that's the only thing you can read out.
No, I looked at the 2 before. Well, anyway, whatever, 2A.
That's my writing.
There's my motion.
Okay, so motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to grant a deed easement on the following property, MAP 64, Lot 105, Unit 30.
We'll step that one over.
Yeah. Deed waivers. All right. Maybe you ought to do this after all. I do this every year, in other words. A deed waiver to MAP 64, Lot 105, Unit 30, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver...
Grant a deed waiver, yep.
To MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 350, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver to MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 111, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion and a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver to MAP 111, Lot 5, Unit 5, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 202, under RSA 80:762-A. I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 202, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver to MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 116, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver to MAP 32, Lot 12, Unit 29, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 239, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 239, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Did I skip one?
No, you did that one, you did that one again.
Oh.
Yeah, I gotta scroll.
So that one gets a belt and suspended.
Yeah.
So we're on 95, 64, 78.
Okay, thank you. I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 78, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 110, Lot 2, Unit 77, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 87, Lot 14, Unit 21B, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 5, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 124, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 228, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
If you need a break.
No, did I just do 228?
You just did 228, yep.
Yeah, I'm scrolling here, so the, the lines get a little mixed up.
So we're on 55, 44.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 55, Lot 44, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 43, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 264, for, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 32, Lot 12, Unit 8, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 103, Lot 13, Unit 37, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 309, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 222, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 103, Lot 15, Unit 11, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 308, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion and a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 87, Lot 14, Unit 1A, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 324, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 270, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver under MAP 95, lot, MAP 95, Lot 65, Unit 15.
Lot 64.
I'm getting down there. Okay, MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 15, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 47, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 180, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 217, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Next year I'll come up with a song. I move to grant a deed waiver for, excuse me, MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 343, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I, I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 125, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 144, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 611, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 111, Lot 5, Unit 8, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 212, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 110, Lot 2, Unit 7, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
Motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 110, Lot 2, Unit 7, under RSA 80:76.
Nope, you already did that one. For 104, 79, that's all right.
I either scroll too much or not enough, I know. Okay, withdrawn. I moved to grant a deed wa, no, really, I moved to grant a deed waiver to MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 105, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 37, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And I move to grant a deed waiver for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 41, under RSA 80:762-A.
Second.
So motion in a second, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Madam.
That was backbreaking.
Something to drink now?
I do. I also need to stretch.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Do we need motions on Section 1, or no?
Those are going to be, proceed, I think.
Just sent it to you, thank you. What seems like yesterday was actually some time ago, the board had expressed some interest in getting an update on the grants that we had applied for and the status of those grants and Town Manager's Office. And Mr. Dean and Ms. Roy have put together a grant history update. Mr. Dean, I'll turn this over to you.
Sure. As you can see, we've successfully obtained millions of dollars' worth of grants, which is great news for our town departments. They work very hard, as we know, to go out and seek sources of funding and then execute the applications for that funding. Just to go through the list briefly, the Public Works Department, you can see the major grants are the West Side Drive Construction Grant and the School Street Construction Grant, and those will total in, in sum $3 million. For Water Sewer, we have some specific grants. One is for cybersecurity in the amount of $100,000, the lead service line inventory for $50,000. And then the septic receiving upgrade, we're in the New Hampshire DES State Aid Grant Plus Program, so that's going to be up to 10% on installation of the new septic receiving equipment that you just approved tonight. So that is good news on that front. Parks and Rec, they've been active in the Facility Energy Assessment Program, $3,600. Also, the big grant, as we know, the Community Center Improvement Project, that was $841,000. And then the Planet Playground Grant, which is 50% of that project, $297,500. Just stop me if you have any questions as we go.
Thank you.
Conservation and Sustainability Energy Grant, Federal Department of Energy, if you remember, that was for the energy efficiency of manufactured housing. That was for $200,000 and was roundly celebrated last year when it came to the town. And that was a great effort by our Energy Committee, working with our Conservation and Sustainability Planner, Kristin Murphy, on that. And then Conservation, $1,500 for the dashboard, Conservation Dashboard and Granite Conservation Data Update, a C grant, and also a State Moose Plate Grant of $20,000 to support the Rains Collaborative Siding Project. And then the New Hampshire Grassroots Grow Grant for $1,000 to support the Exeter Window Dressers Program. Then Conservation had another grant in there, the State Coastal Resilience Grant, which is a recent one that we're utilizing for initiatives on Swayze Parkway, and that's for $18,000. In the Police Department, we identified three grants. One was to or through the Office of Highway Safety, one was for, two of them actually are for driving and roadway enforcement projects. Typically, those involve extra DWI patrols and things of that nature, and that was combined about $25,000. And then the Congressional Direct Spend COPS, tech, tech, excuse me, Technical and Equipment for Police Radios, $112,000 for the Police Department. And in the Fire Department, we have three grants identified, the MPG Grant for Security Upgrades, at the EOC for Fencing. We have an EMT and AM, AEMT Credentialing Grant for $6,354. And then the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was just recently updated, that was a $10,000 grant. So in total, millions of dollars' worth of grants here.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Before we take questions, I'd like to, I'd just like to recognize, particularly for folks at home watching, you know, the, the board has the pleasure and the privilege to have these grants brought before us individually by respective town staff, but I think when you look at this collectively as a whole and you, and you see the millions of dollars that staff has, you know, filed for grants and received grants, I mean, you look at the leadership at Public Works, both past and present, you know, Jennifer Perry and Steve, Steve Cronin now have done a fantastic job amongst the other leaders in Public Works. You know, Dave Sharples and Kristin Murphy, I mean, there's not a grant that, that they can apply for that they don't. Police Chief Pullan and now Fire Chief Pizon are always very aggressive in seeking any possible grants they can. And I know Mr. Bisson and Mr. Tovey have worked very closely with, with Ms. Roy in identifying grants for Parks and Rec, but I think when you look at this piece of paper and you, and you identify the staff behind each one of these grants, it just goes to show once again that the town of Exeter just has a roster of all-stars in many regards with our department heads, but particularly when it comes to identifying and, and going out and getting grants. I also want to, you know, not underestimate the volunteer work of our various committees that work with town staff, but particularly the former Chair of the Energy Committee, Renee Allen, who worked very, very closely with Kristin Murphy to get a lot of the energy grants. So, you know, I know she's retired from the Energy Committee, but I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention her. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions or comments?
My thoughts exactly. You just expressed them. The staff is incredible at this, and it takes the dollars that the taxpayers pay out and that we spend and augment them and extend them, and it's a critical part of our program, and I'm very grateful to our employees and our volunteers.
Well said.
I think all that's missing here is the grand total at the bottom of the page.
Yes, so we'll put that, we'll add that and add this to the website as well.
That'd be great. I know McDonald's says billions and billions serve, but we'd like to have a number.
There's all, I wish I could think of her name, and I can't look it up on my phone, it's too small. I think it was Valerie on, we've had a few new people to the Conservation Commission that are grant writers, and that was really exciting. So my apologies for not remembering the name, but yeah, we're very fortunate with our department heads and our volunteers.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
No, that's it for me, thank you. Jumping to regular business, Selectwoman Gilman, you've done enough with the.
Done for the night.
With the deed waivers. With the deed waivers, we do have a, under permits and approvals, we have a notice of intent to cut. And Mr. Dean, I think this is map five lot one, is that correct?
Yes, this is out on Old Town Farm Road.
Yep. Do you have any information on this, other than what's in the notice, or?
Just, this is state property.
Understood, okay. And you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Then I would entertain a motion to authorize the cutting of wood or timber at map five lot one. Will that do it?
That will do it.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mr. Dean, Town Manager Report, please.
Okay, my report is essentially that I was on vacation last week, but I do have one thing I'd like to mention, which is the MRI process continues with revaluation hearings. They have had 379 total meetings so far, with the breakdown being 213 residential homes, 71 manufactured homes, 60 residential condos, and 35 commercial properties. The note from the assessors, our appointments are scheduled to end Wednesday, September 4th, although callbacks for those requesting appointments that were not scheduled will continue to be followed up on. And then they did say that hearing reviews are expected to take about four to five weeks. And then, as a result of the process, just to let the board know, the MS1, which is our report evaluation annually, was given an extension by the DRA, so we now have an extension through October 15th to be able to finalize that. MRI is going to look to get final values certified by the board on September 30th, so that will be part of that night's agenda, and MRI will be here for that.
Okay. That's gonna be a long night, September 30th.
It could be.
Yeah, no, it will be.
It will.
We've got a lot on the
You're right, Mr. Chair, it will be.
That's fine, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
So.
So that was it from me, unless there were questions?
Nope. Well, we welcome you back from your vacation.
Thank you.
You had a nice week, so.
I did, and thanks to Assistant Town Manager Roy, who was steady in my absence, as she always is.
Thank you very much. Okay, Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Gilman.
So to all my committees, I'm gonna give you my apologies ahead of time, because I left my report at my office, so I'm going to try to remember everything, and I will play catch-up if I need to next meeting. So Recreation Advisory Board was August 21st. The kids at camp, and I believe it's one of the mowers, but it could be the line, named the first robot, and its name is Sir Han.
I'm sorry?
Sir Han.
Oh.
It's spelt like J-A-N or something like that, but it's pronounced Han, so that was fun.
Okay.
They had a naming contest, and that's who did it.
Love it.
Yeah, so there's a few more naming, but I think the Rec Advisory Board's gonna get to name one or two, and, yeah. Big Brothers Big Sisters Tournament was discussed a lot, and, so there was $50,000 raised, and it went really well. You know, there's a push to try to fund or make sure our tennis courts and our pickleball courts are up to par, because there's a few suggestions, so I'm sure we'll be seeing something about that in the budget coming up. Did talk about the senior council, and how much, at least I can speak for myself, that I enjoyed them coming, and how well-prepared they were, and excited they were to present to us. They talked about the grant award from Exeter Hospital, Planet Playground fundraising, the pros and cons of that, whether it could be checks or, or credit cards and things like that, and the amount, they are going, it was suggested that a priority list be made, because it was just kind of random, we're gonna, we wanna do these extra things and fundraise for them, but there was no priority list. So that should be coming up on that. And then the Housing Advisory Committee met, had a second meeting, and we discussed in general, short-term rentals in 79E, but we're in a situation where we really can't vote, because we don't have enough voting members, so that's on this board's agenda to figure out what we can do, whether it's a working committee. 79E was whether or not it would be affordable aspect only, and short-term rentals, and how that could be pros and cons for the community. And then I had a Planning Board meeting on August 22nd, and we had the second public hearing on the Capital Improvement Program, so a letter should be coming from the Chair, just, there was, they had no concerns about anyone, anything, but there were a few that they really wanted to support, so a few items, so that will be coming
Thank you.
In time for us to discuss our budget. Application, Planning Board Case Number 24-4, which is Foss Motors out on Portsmouth Ave, that was approved for the parking only. The building has, part of that has been withdrawn from the application, because of the concerns of the Conservation Commission and some of the Planning Board members had some concerns about being so close to our watershed. And then another case was moved, 24-11 was tabled, because the applicants were not ready, and then the other application, 24-12, was approved, and it's a, it's a two-residential duplex structure for a total of 14 units, that's their main street goal. And I personally will like to thank the person who did that design, I think she dotted all her i's and crossed all her t's and really tried to fit things into the community really well, and so that passed. And then unfortunately, Arts Committee was scheduled for August 27th, and it was canceled at kind of the last minute. I was actually in Dover at a workforce housing sidewalk and was rushing back to get here when I found it was canceled. And then I'll get more into that workforce housing, because I got there late, there was a really bad accident, and then I left early because of that really bad accident, and I wanted to make sure I was back in time. Nick Taylor of Seacoast Workforce Housing is gonna give me some more background on that, it's a transfer thing, so that's it.
Most impressive without your notes.
I know, sorry.
Pretty detailed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman.
Yes, all I had was an HTC meeting, which took strangely on Friday morning. We didn't have a quorum at our usual Thursday night meeting, and we had to, we couldn't wait a month, we couldn't make the applicant wait a month, and we also have a 45-day deadline, so we're able to get everybody together, have more than a quorum on Friday morning, and it was just one case for really a change in materials and adding a balcony to a house on High Street, which we think is going to turn out well.
Excellent.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Chartren.
I did miss the last Select Board meeting, so I am gonna report on the Conservation Committee meeting of August 13th, seems like ancient history now. They took up two cases, one, Selectwoman Valandra just referred to, on Portsmouth Ave, and they recommended, they made a recommendation to the Planning Board that that building that the applicant withdrew not be pursued because of its proximity to our surface water facility. And then they also took up a, a application across Portsmouth Ave from another auto dealer, and, and they also made a recommendation that the dealer proceed with care. I must say, I am so impressed with our Conservation Committee. They take such great care, they consider the applicant's needs, but they are fierce in their, in defending our natural resources, and they're able to scale, like what's important and what's not. It's really impressive. I have never served with the Conservation Committee until the beginning of this town year, and I just am in awe of their leadership. So that's my report.
Great, thank you, and I'm happy to hear that. Excuse me, I had the Swayze Park trustee meeting August 20th, and that was about a 15-minute meeting, went through some placeholders, and I informed the trustees, initially, we were going to invite them this evening, but we're not ready, and they agreed that until we're ready, you know, there's no need to meet. However, I have had some conversations with Public Works, and the Public Works Director, Steve Cronin, will be attending the next Swayze trustee meeting, which is September 18th, so I anticipate, and of course, everything's subject to change, but I anticipate that on our September 30th meeting that I referenced earlier, we should be having the trustees back with us with next steps to move forward on the warrant article now that the siphon job is, is over, so I'm optimistic that, that the timeline will move in that, in that fashion. The next couple of meetings through October, and again, everything is subject to change, we've been working with Mr. Dean and last week with Ms. Roy to try to balance everything. We will be having presentations at some point from the Tree Committee, Finance Director will be giving his quarterly finance report. Again, we hope to have the Swayze Park trustees, Mr. Dean has the draft budget to present to us also on September 30th, to prepare for the October 2nd BRC kickoff. We do have a public hearing at our next meeting, it's in our correspondence, we'll segue into that in a second, for the cable contract that we discussed at our last meeting in October. I anticipate the Point Park Committee coming forward with recommendations for next steps, for their initial next steps with the property, and we're gonna try to squeeze in downtown parking conversation with Mr. Sharples sometime in October, so those are just a quick spoiler alert of things to come, but I'm bringing it up to let the board know we're gonna be awfully busy for the next two months, so, so I don't feel bad about us approaching 8 o'clock, almost finishing this meeting, because there'll be some late nights coming up. Moving into correspondence, there's the notice of the public hearing that I mentioned. We also had correspondence from Enbridge. Mr. Dean, did you have anything to add to this?
On the vegetation maintenance? No, I didn't, that's a pretty standard notice.
Okay. And we had a supplement to our packet this afternoon, it's a piece of correspondence that was received by members of the Select Board late Friday after the packet had already been posted, and I asked the Town Manager's Office to add this as a supplement to the packet. It is a letter from some residents informing us of a recently enacted HB 1014, which takes effect on September 10th, 2024, and I've asked Mr. Dean this afternoon to look into this and give the board an update as to what it, what it means.
So yes, so this is HB 1014, it was part of Chapter 182 of the statutes annotated that was adopted in the last legislative session, and basically what this does is it certifies Columbus Day as the holiday, the official holiday of that particular day. There's a piece in the law that basically speaks to it, it says, "Holiday Designations", and then follows it by saying, "Any municipality, town, village, or unincorporated place that adopts a holiday on a date indicated in RSA 288:1 shall use the appellation for such holiday designated in RSA 288:1 with respect to any official communication, publication, document, or calendars." And so that is the impetus for declaring Columbus Day the official holiday under RSA 288:1.
So for the board's information, and for those at home, number one, what does this mean for the Town of Exeter, and does, is there any action that needs to be taken by the board?
None by the board, this is state law, so state law would apply.
All right, and what that means for the Town of Exeter is?
We will celebrate, recognize Columbus Day as Columbus Day.
Okay. Any questions?
Only if I could ask our representative to the State House to see if somebody can start working on another day, possibly to introduce a bill for Indigenous Day?
That is already in the works.
Oh, good.
Because it is every year.
Well, now we have
Is there something that includes us from celebrating both?
Just an argument about the day, that's all it's been. And this is a different story than has been presented to anybody at the State House, so that might make a difference in choosing a different day for Indigenous Peoples' Day. But no, there's nothing wrong with having another day.
It would be so great if people in Concord concentrated on things that impact people's lives in a healthy way, and join Representative Gilman in speaking up, we have policies that actually make it happen.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay, that's correspondence, reviewing the board calendar, before we do that, we have the, the primary election is next Tuesday, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Tuck Auditorium, and Selectwoman Gilman, obviously you will not be with us as you're on the ballot, but thank you for providing full coverage for the entire day. That's not an easy feat, but we're appreciative of your effort to do that.
I thank friends of, friends of friends.
Thank you.
And usually I have a bunch of work meetings, I have mostly cleared my schedule, but there are a couple of times that I'll have to dug out, I can try.
Can I get those from you?
The times?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I'm gonna be patchy, but if I know that you're not there, and Selectwoman Gilman aren't there.
It will be 11 to 12, and 1:30 to 3.
Okay.
Selectwoman Gilman has coverage through the whole day, so.
Right, so as long as the three of us are there, yeah, I just need to know if, you know, I usually try to take one break, and so I just need to.
So in my mind, Mr. Chair, I am gonna be there definitely from 11 to 3.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and at least one of the volunteers that I have is willing to work more hours, so he probably fit in.
And I think the same could be said about a second that I know, but we'll see. Okay, great, thank you for that.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, would you contact our town moderator about that?
About the names?
Yeah.
Yeah. Clerk as well, or just the moderator?
Both.
I'll do both, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna review the board calendar, we'd gone through November, but I've got it mapped out through the end of the year, and I want to apologize to the board, because I made a mistake in November
No, no.
That I recognized this afternoon, however, it is going to be advantageous now the rest of the calendar flows, so I, I had Thanksgiving being a week early
Okay.
And then realized that it's a week late, so.
Let's go, let's hear it.
So let's go, September 16th.
Yeah.
September 30th.
Yeah.
October 15th, which is a Tuesday.
Yeah.
October 28th.
Mm-hmm.
November 12th, which is a Tuesday.
November 12th.
Yeah.
Tuesday.
November 25th, that's the difference, I'd had the 18th before, since November 25th.
Yeah, I just need to move that one.
So delete the 18th.
Got it.
I think I might not be here on the 25th.
Just let me know.
Okay. Yes, I think I will be in Mexico.
Okay, then you won't be here.
So, okay, so not on the 28th, on the 18th?
No, 18th. So in November, it's the 12th, which is a Tuesday, November 25th, and that lines up perfectly for December, which would be December 9th and December 23rd.
December 9th?
Yeah.
Okay. And what was the other day?
December 23rd. Is everyone good, or do you want me to read them again?
You do one more time, Mr. Chair.
Of course, September 16th, September 30th.
Can you hold up one second?
Yep.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm a little clumsy with this.
I can't even use that.
The 16th, the 30th?
Yeah. October 15th, October 28th, November 12th, November 25th.
Yep.
December 9th.
Okay.
And December 23rd.
I got them all.
Okay, wonderful.
No, I just need to overlay the budget recommendation.
Yeah, there's like ZPA and CESTO, but you're aware of that, right?
Yes.
So.
Yep. That, I mean, this, you know, this is, I know, three Tuesdays, three Tuesdays in three months, but because of the way the holidays fall, and I really try to avoid going
Three weeks.
Three weeks, or week after week, because it just, we don't get as much done, and we have a lot to do, and, and this just lines up for our every other week schedule.
It's fine, yeah, I just, I have a lot of meetings in there, because ZPA, I watch in Preparation and Planning Board, and, yeah, Arts Committee.
So.
It's a good plan, thank you.
Again, buckle in, because the next two months at least are gonna be, are gonna be busy, but productive, and I'm excited about most of what we're gonna present, so. We do not have any further non-public issues this evening, so if there's no other business, I would entertain
I just have one thing.
Oh, please.
Because I, as the Chair of the Planning Board likes to say, I'm the Social Secretary, so I'm gonna wish our Chair a happy early birthday, because it's birthday Sunday.
Thank you.
And now I will motion to adjourn.
Second.
So motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we stand adjourned, thank you and good night, everybody.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.